So I'll begin. Uh, welcome everyone. Uh, before we get started, are there any visitors? Okay. All right, then we will begin as we always do with our land. All Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homeland of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chilula Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to the elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and people who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. We learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship, people of the Spokane Tribe, and all those who share this land. All right. Uh, hopefully you had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any changes that we need or can we work with the agenda as it is? Right? Uh, then I will have a motion to approve the agenda as it is.
Move to approve the agenda as it is.
You're okay. All right, all in favor? All right, hi, any opposed? All right, we will use the agenda as it is. Uh, the next item will be an approval of the October twenty twenty five board minutes.
Move to approve the October twenty one twenty twenty five board.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Hi, hi.
Any opposed? All right. And now the approval of the twenty twenty five October bills and contributions.
Move to approve the October twenty five, twenty five bills and contributions, the amount of one million three hundred sixty one thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars and seventeen cents.
Thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right.
May I just interject really quick? On last month's minutes, it says approval of September, and then it says July and August, but it's supposed to say September, and you did that as such, but I just want to note it.
Oh.
In my minutes now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, Nicole with the financial report.
Thank you much. Good evening, everybody. Okay, so for October twenty twenty five, the library operation, with our cash and investments trend, so as of October, we're able to pay fifty seven days worth of operating costs in our available cash, cash and investments balance. Um, just a reminder, one day of operating costs based on the adopted budget is thirty nine thousand seven hundred sixty five dollars. Um, so that balance is now four million two hundred seventy thousand seven hundred and five dollars, which does include the reserve and is net of our income. For the expenditure trend for operations, uh, the October total was one million three hundred sixty one thousand eight hundred twenty five dollars. Eighty percent of that amount was for free pay periods for personnel wages and benefits. Uh, the other twenty percent is, uh, some of the highlights of that portion include interfund charges for eighty nine thousand fourteen. It does include some of the fourth quarter services, like for indirect charges, um, the, the accounting services as well as workers' comp and unemployment. Uh, we spent on capital, books, and materials, seventy one thousand and fifty two dollars, almost to the penny, same as, um, you know, uh, October of twenty twenty four. Anyway, I don't know. Utility were, uh, totaled twenty one thousand three hundred thirty five, and our third-party security services were ninety two thousand two hundred and fifty four dollars. And then as far as business office updates, uh, business office staff have been making some process improvements through more efficient filing of our revenue reporting and reconciliation files. We're also finding areas within some of our expenditure, um, tracking items like keep the parts moving like that where we keep, um, additional audit check, uh, checking cannot be posted on the online portal. Um, so in, uh, we're integrating this, um, improvement and a very positive impact on our overall, um, audit efficiency. So we're going to less locations when they're digging out boxes, probably. And then as far as the budget update, uh, regarding last week's meeting council on November thirteenth, I'm gonna take it whatever it will result, I just moved the dialogue within that, and I just really want to thank everybody in the library and the, and the community for all this bullshit that we've gotten. Well, thank you.
Any questions? Nicole, can you remind me the pre-bond? The day, the number of days that was, that you tried to have reserved, like thirty?
Uh, our goal was ninety.
Ninety, okay.
Because you were at zero.
Yeah, okay.
So they're going through ninety, but thirty is what we state recommended, and that's kind of what we're gauging if we're spending down our time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Nicole? All right. Uh, hi Gary, welcome.
Hello.
Would you like to have a chairman's report?
Yeah.
Okay. Nice, then we will move on to Andrew's report.
All right. Uh, we concluded the public engagement part, uh, for building, uh, building Vision Twenty Thirty, uh, and that with our focus groups, we had about forty people participate in them. Uh, we had a lot of people sort of drop out at the end, but we really had some great, uh, discussions uh, around some topics that we wanted more information on. Uh, I included some of the takeaways uh, from those sessions, uh, six big ones, that human presence matters, that we need to invest in staff disability and empathetic service, uh, balancing safety and belonging, so designing policy to protect without losing. Uh, cultivating youth pathways, this is positioning the library as a launchpad for skills, careers, and creativity, a champion, privacy, freedom, uh, for intellectual freedoms, cordless, and trust. Fifth one's strength and reputation partnerships, that's connecting public and school libraries to foster closed diversity gaps. And the final one was to celebrate connectivity as the holding library role Spokane's with kind of common stuff, since they're learning together. Uh, feedback from the session, we had a couple of participants that, you know, they're from the neighboring councils, and they said that this is the best session they've been to, uh, which felt really good. I have Amanda with Paris to thank for designing those sessions, really doing the heavy, uh, thing from behind those. Uh, I can see us doing more of these sort of focus groups as we're continuing on and getting back after going through and actually implementing Vision Twenty Thirty and have more questions as we're doing this. It just seemed like a really great way to get some in-person engagement back from. We'll be incorporating those into the whole vision for twen- for twenty thirty and then hoping to bring that forward adoption. As far as DEI goes, uh, we'll be doing, uh, as yet determined documentary for December, uh, we'll keep rotating on that. And we continue to support, uh, the American Heritage Month blog post, uh, really, really be trying to be connecting people to organizations, doing needed new work around travel sovereignty. Uh, they also had a deep work workshop, and of course, uh, this by Northern American authors. As far as our collections go, we added another school to our partner card program. So Gonzaga University students and staff, uh, would now be able to, once they're registered, then get their student number, their numbers are then loaded into our system and they get instant access to the library, just like the people smoking public schools and community colleges as well as Gonzaga Prep. And this seems like a good idea. Our star spotlight for October was to have the Reese. Uh, they've been building in as part of our outreach service, State Care Fulls team, and really just caught up really quick, really doing a great job. Uh, for connecting the kids with reflection in our outreach services. And we continue to work with the city of Spokane on the twenty twenty six, uh, budget. Did submit the closed budget to city council and after the October board meeting. Also sent communication out via our newsletter to the public about tons of taxes and not passing the refunded, uh, library. Got some press about that, uh, interviews with X O Y as well as NPR. Who be also is coming out in the end later on this week. Uh, Danny was interviewed for that as well. Sure, some votes from, uh, other folks from the city as well. Uh, so we're gonna keep pushing on and see where we're good. Any questions for me?
Will you give me just a little bit more information about what the outreach services take their full?
Yeah, so they pull books from the collection, they do basically drops.
Okay.
Over at different daycare facilities, and I'm not exactly sure how many we reach with the use.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Yeah, like sixty, seventy. So like kind of to facilitate like bulk borrowing at those different places, or they are donations to those like?
For, for.
Both, both borrow.
Yeah. Same, it's very similar to what we do in the senior centers.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll do the same thing at senior centers, we'll drop some materials.
So this would be one of the programs we talk about, one that would potentially lose if we lost, but maybe what that would look like, okay, thank you.
And probably the senior centers, I think we hit over forty votes, um, in.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty significant. This is a service that has been around, I believe, since the seventies, the library director back then, uh, started the program, and it's just been really popular and effective.
Yeah.
Materials to folks that may not be able to get, uh, so many.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions for Andrew? And the council member, Clicky, thank you for being here. You are up.
Hi, so yes, we did talk for meeting with the libraries, um, and I have talked to most council members in between, um, that meeting and now, uh, with our open public media act is very strict on studies compared to what it is on the legislature and other bodies. So we're not allowed to count votes, not for, we talk to each other about that kind of stuff, uh, very easily, because if you talk to more than two other council members, then it becomes a quorum of a quasi-meeting. So it's a pretty difficult situation to work on a controversial budget, and this budget, because it's thirteen million dollars again, and it's almost all cuts, very little revenue that we've worked out for this, um, it's particularly tough. And we're in a situation of weighing layoffs versus layoffs. And so, um, I think that the outreach work that the library's doing, um, is compelling, but I just wanted to give some feedback about things that I think might be most compelling. Um, first off, I think comparables to other library systems and how well this one performs the bank for the book is a pretty impressive point. And, um, so I think that one might be one that we could, oh, um, continuing to demonstrate that broad public community support. I think the comment letters with personal stories are still best kind of comment letter. Uh, but coming from a library, maybe the comparables would be the most compelling things to say. Um, I don't know if people feel in a place where they're able to make value judgments about which things we cut and which things we keep. Uh, but I, I, I think that there are certain kinds of positions, uh, inside council and inside administration where, uh, does library already serve some of that? Or is that something that's just supposed to make my job easier and may or not, may not do that, sharing the personal with six other council members? Or is there, is the library service more important? Those are the kind of questions I'm asking myself, and I think that, um, other council members should be asking themselves. Um, so just to be like very transparent, that's kind of been the journey so far. I do know, because he's my seatmate and, um, because we coordinate a lot, that council members opponent and I are very interested in trying to at least create a bridge for this year to where it doesn't adversely affect hours and services as much as we can. But, um, preliminary conversations, I don't know really always who that are willing to go that far. So I think there's still work to be done, a conversation to be had. Um, and, um, you know, the rest of this week is a good time to get those done. The final vote will be on the twenty fourth. If we're lucky, if we're not lucky, we'll be doing a whole additional, brand-new council member that hasn't been working inside the city and may not see the efficiencies that some of the rest of us could see. So, um, it behooves us to get it done sooner. But, um, I don't see a clear path forward right now. Like, there is, there's a possibility we will have no budget for the twenty fourth, given where we're at, and given where council members have gone and I stand with my, there.
Would you, uh, suggest that we just send, uh, the comps comparables of other cities directly to council, or are you suggesting we have a other in-person meetings?
I think probably comps helpful and easy to read, unfortunately.
We're gonna.
Directly to council is probably the best. Uh, I think the in-person meetings are very helpful, but sometimes people absorb information in different ways, making a different presentation every single time, not the exact same person and the exact same method, um, to have it really sink in. It's also good to hear it from community members, but with the comps, I don't know if that's, you know, a natural thing to come from them, but that's, that's what I'm seeing. I think that's the most helpful input I've come up with so far. I mean, there are council members that made the, the case that every time we show up to a library, the parking lot is completely full. Um, but some council members don't see that. I had a bizarre conversation where somebody was like, oh, well, even in weekend hours, like maybe not, those aren't as important. But as a library kid growing up, I was like, that's the most bizarre thing I have ever heard, like that is when I went to the library as a child, like, just didn't make any sense to me. So I think that some folks get a little distanced from being a library user, and they forget it isn't just the stacks. Even back in the eighties, you still had all of those social elements, and the operating hours are a huge part of that. Um, I did hear feedback from Councilman McCutcheon that operating hours is probably his number one priority, especially if the branches is less concerned about the operating hours downtown for whatever reasons. So.
Odd because it's his name.
Yes, but I think he thinks most people go to Hilliard in northeast, I guess.
Do you think that would be helpful to share also, like what the traffic is at each of those branches, is there considering?
Perhaps, or maybe, uh, maybe, I don't know if you can even do this though, but like an assurance that that is a prior to keep the branches open as much as possible. And so I think some people get programming and operation hours confused as if they conflict, but I think they complement each other because there's like staff in the building, obviously, for the programming. So for me, it's not as big of a conflict, but I think some people, you know, they could programming as something that maybe happens outside of the branches, and I know sometimes it does. But, um, also I think there's a disconnect between like seeing big stacks and not realizing that there are stacks inside of community centers, daycare centers, schools. Like, the books are still out there in circulation, but they don't need to necessarily be sitting in stack for them to be real to people. And so I don't think people understand kind of how checking out a book works if they don't go to the library much. I had a strange constituent comment, not that the constituent is strange, I just found the characterization strange. I was unhappy that when they reserved a book online, somebody went into a room to go get their reserved book instead of it being out on a stack, and they thought that was a problem. And I, I don't, I don't know what that thinking is like, if they're thinking of a kind of like a Harry Potter library where you always go to the stack to get the book, even if you've reserved the book or.
Yeah, they'll make sure it's there for you.
Yeah.
So we'll go grab it.
So I, I think that I, there's little nitpicky things out there that I think people need to be connected back to the values of the user experience as well. If that even makes sense.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
We had a lot, lot of conversations about libraries lately, so kind of, that's cool.
So sorry.
Well, it's always a good thing. I, I think it's circumstances that are difficult.
Yeah, I've been doing it for thirty years.
Well, I think that's what they say to me, that they, so they just don't think we, they get there that the number's too big. Is, um, you know, it's a challenge, because we're already thirteen million dollars sure in general, so it's rough.
Yep. Well, thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you again, you know, member Clicky. Uh, now to Amanda, who's working for you.
Um, so some highlights of the past month. Uh, Lena presented at the Opposite Neighborhood Services Neighborhood Summit, it's an annual conference, neighborhood conference that, uh, current or aspiring neighborhood leaders attend to learn more about being community leaders, and she presented a presentation called Screaming Into The Void, all about how to improve community, you know. Um, she did a great job, got great feedback, so thank you, and represented the library also at a tabling event afterwards, um, where people could walk around and learn more about neighborhood resources and, and city resources. Um, we're beginning our work on twenty twenty six. Um, we actually just had a strategic planning meeting, like our team of three here at Shadle for the two hours prior to this meeting, um, talking about what we, um, hope some of our goals are. Nothing is final, we're still brainstorming all of that, um, but what some of our goals will be for twenty twenty six. Um, and also we've been well underway on planning our first annual camp, our annual campaign that usually runs in, in January through March of the year. So, um, we're working on that, and I intend to give you a preview for that, um, at the next meeting. But just wanted to let you know that a lot of planning is going into place right now for twenty twenty six, um, for different events and initiatives we're doing. And I wanted to give you a quick, uh, the regular stats that we usually share here, but I also wanted to give you a quick update on some of the details of the budget messaging. In particular, Andrew mentioned what they were, but some of the click rates and open rates that we've had on those, um, for our budget messaging strategy, so on eleven seven, we did have that all customer budget message go out. It was a note from Andrew. It had a thirty percent read rate with, um, nine hundred and fifty unique clicks on the city council members link and a hundred and forty-six unique clicks on the direct email addresses. Then we also linked, we had a blog post that recapped everything that Andrew, was basically a duplicate of what Andrew said in his email. That had two hundred twenty, has had two hundred twenty-four visits, and we linked to that same blog post in our weekly email. That went on on Monday, um, the tenth, and that had a twenty-four percent read rate with eighty-two unique clicks. So seeing a lot of engagement there, I also pulled the stats for the two social media posts we did on that topic. We posted, um, on Facebook and Instagram and LinkedIn, but that had minimal engagement. But we've posted on Instagram and Facebook with the special budget message, um, with graphics of the message and the link to the blog post. And the reach on Instagram was ten thousand five hundred and seventy people, and on Facebook, seven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight. Um, and with some comments and engagement as well on them. So, um, and then as Andrew mentioned, we've had media coverage on that as well, and a series of internal messages that we've also been sending to staff to keep them apprised of what external communication will be going on, what, what the process has been so far, um, and what to expect along with talking.
Thank you. Any questions for Lena? Great work.
All right. Somehow October was more programmed in October than any other month this year, if I'm not sure. I would plan, we just happened to have a lot of one-on-ones in the, uh, Northwest Special Collections this month, where some, some students that came in for those, a lot of music lessons. Um, five thousand three hundred and twenty-three people came to events, all of our libraries this month, in October. Um, they're pretty even to split between adult and youth. The highest attended event was the thirty-three artist market at the High, the partner of a local artist who was a high artist, who's now running this market around, which is seven hundred and eighty-three people came to that. Chaos there. Toddler storytime with eighty-eight people is also chaos, so, and I heard we had a hundred people at a storytime today, and hear more about that next month. Um, Spokane is reading, we, um, a partnership with Spokane County Library District, A and T's, a hundred and fifty-two people come either in person or online. But true, this time. Shadle Park here hosted a WSU Hall Fair, had a hundred ninety-eight people come to it. We hosted at Central the Great Pumpkin Festival, peanut's seventy-fifth anniversary event, brought in seventy-two people. I wasn't there because the peanuts make me sad, freak me out, so, but people love them. Not on this, that should be mentioned is we had our final for now, Lilac City Live in October. Very, we sent it out, very goofy and fun, a hundred and fifty-ish people came to that, at least. So it was a way to say goodbye of something we've been eight years now.
Possibility that it'll come back.
Um, it was just, when we, when it started, it was pretty much the main thing we did, and now we do four hundred and eighty-eight things a month. So it kind of kept sinking down in the, in the store, in the rankings, and kind of also put, put some attention to it, like, so maybe it might come back, or it might come back for like a special one-off thing, some big event. But I've been brainstorming about doing some Lilac City Live presents sort of things, where it's on those third, third dates to have like a stand-up comedy, night or a concert or other things, if we can do that. Will it be less neighboring?
What other questions?
I'm so bummed I missed the artists, the artists. I saw it and I was like, yeah, but their plans, but I'm not at all surprised. I feel like this is the time people are looking for things to do. I just had a conversation with, uh, another mom, and she was like, what can we do that does not cost a lot of money? But it's indoors and more. Like, there is nothing, but the library. Um, and we ended up coming to a toddler storytime, it just, there really isn't. I was thinking about that. There really isn't a ton to do unless you have money to be able to go on spend, even that. Give it much, so I just wanted to thank you, and I'm not as surprised about the, like, especially when kids are like a pistol.
Yeah.
What, what are you supposed to do? To work. And, yeah. So it's, it's good to see.
Yes.
So move the story for council members and Calcart, it's a, it's a, I've had a comment to me that there's a lot of, of families still. So.
I mean, I think a way, you know, when you were talking, I was thinking of how's a way that like you could show everything that you guys do? Um, because it's a lot, it's a long order. And that budgeting message, I got like phone calls from family, the people, they're, do you know about this? It's the library, okay, but do not go on social media, aren't there? Email, I was worried. Uh, and so it was really good conversation starter, and I'm like, yeah, why don't you do all these great things that I did not know they had that? I have a sister who homeschools four kids, so she's like, what, what can we do? Yeah, I just don't, there's like very much a disconnect sometimes that moms say. So any way to get that, that's a job is great, but I think you're doing a good job, is what I'm just saying.
Any other questions for Jason? All right. Onto new business. Resident and non-resident library card policy.
And I'll be playing the part of Paris for this one, the next episode would be Amanda. Part of Paris, well, uh, this is a follow-up from the update that we did, that's in the resident, uh, library card policy. Library card policy. We were asked to actually have a conversation, uh, with Spokane Tribe, which we did. Uh, it took a bit to get on the agenda, uh, but we can have a conversation. Over and they were very enthusiastic, uh, about having this inclusion to our policy. So we are, uh, going back to the original proposed policy and adding in the language, our enrolled members. Spokane Tribe, if you can see, uh, that show, uh, full circle for that policy. They were thinking of all different ways that they could market this to, you know, their tribal members. And I think this is going to be, uh, you know, beginning of a good partnership.
Do you envision the thing would get the same sort of partnership? I know that it would really have partnerships with like Spokane Public Schools. With things that I like, working so hard, pushing the technology, trying to make sure we should, if they need, be able to take care of. Do you imagine that kind of lift to help with this as well? Or still?
We've talked about that. Uh, I think you have to have a whole conversation to see what sort of identifier they would be comfortable in giving us, but we're certainly open to that.
Well, thank you.
So we are asking the board to put these points to be glorified, especially nine words, uh, into the policies. So we can, uh, we can Spokane try to use.
Any questions or discussion about this? Want to have?
Question?
None. Then I be entertained a motion. Second. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Be opposed? Okay. Yeah. Uh, holiday policy update. But you're. Um, so I'm presenting to a minor update to our holiday policy. So previously when we were open later hours, we, um, had established a policy to close two hours early the night for certain holidays. Um, at five P M for Thanksgiving and New Year's. These typically were the ones that we would close two hours early for. And due to our new closing hours of six P M, we are opting to, for, to propose that we remove that early closure of closing an hour early prior to a holiday, um, for future years. And so we don't feel it's necessary to close at five. Six anyway. Um, and this, I want to clarify is starting in twenty twenty six. So next week on Wednesday, we would still close at five P M and today was New Year's Eve, but starting in twenty twenty six, we will eliminate that by the end of the year. So today I'm asking for board approval of the holiday policy within our early closure times for next. Almost there. Any other questions?
Yes, sorry. Um, can we not do this on Christmas?
No, we actually added Christmas Eve to our policy more recently. So we previously were only closed on Christmas. We added a second full day off. So we did not add a five P M closure prior to an additional holiday.
We've been closed for Christmas Eve, but.
Oh, have we?
Yeah, yeah. Um, but we. I thought.
It's included in the non-holiday. Yeah, it's included in the holiday list of the facilities are closed the day before Christmas and Christmas time.
So we just didn't feel it was needed twenty there.
Your closer day.
That was, I think that was another one that we added recently. And, and recently, like in the last few years, so. I mean, great.
Always.
I mean, the idea is that like giving that extra couple of hour closure before like a single day holiday.
Big family gathering.
Yeah, no, that's a big family gathering. But, but our reason in here is that now we're closing in six anyway.
And it used to be.
Or in some, yeah.
So it really made a difference back then.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All right. Uh, all in favor? All right. Be opposed? Right, motion carries. And now the cooking program presentation.
And while I'm making my way over there, my boss Vanessa is looking to pass on something I made for you. It's a recipe I created years ago. There are two flavors. One has peanut, it is a peanut allergy, all of them have eggs. And feel free, because there's plenty food around, go around for you too. So. Okay, so the, I was actually having a very hard time putting together this program. Content is so bad and I had a difficulty organizing my thought. But in organizing my thought, I realized one very simple truth. And the mission of this, the magic program is actually very, very simple. And that is to convey that good health is not only possible, but extraordinarily simple. And the foundation of good health is food. Simple, wholesome, good food. And how do you convey that? To the community, but through cooking of course. So I have three goals to this. Big series, a big series. And the number one is to make the connection that clean food is the foundation of good health. That's like, that's good. And the second goal is to turn that down to a very simple form cooking. And to highlight several ingredients. I'm not really interested in chasing homemade or exotic hot sauce ingredients, not at all. But that's, I don't even know how to cook that in simple. So lastly, but just as important, I want to provide a platform for local talent professionals as well as home cooks. Because home cooking is so big a part of my own personal, of the living and good health. That I think that home cooks should have a very good representation in the soup. So. I cannot talk about cooking without talking about the garden. And the way I make the connection is through gardening. Can you believe those girls grew those vegetables? They did, and they keep up to harvest that. And so that was the whole mission of this garden. And it actually has served as a very good thought for the health education, the culinary education. I really shouldn't call it cooking. I should call it the health and culinary education. So when the garden was established in twenty twenty two, I didn't have much of a time to put my thoughts together. Then in twenty twenty three, I started to do some very simple cookings. And it's not going to happen that year. We have, um, a weekly garden open house set. We have already made a few day of audience, summer camp. The garden was open to summer camp every week. So I took advantage of that opportunity. As between some very simple cookings in the garden, using ingredients, sometimes I copy from the red directly. That little boy on the far right in black saw the knife going into the tofu and he says, ah, that was so satisfying. And so that is one way that I make the connection. Then, uh, in late part of twenty twenty three, I started to get upon this idea, why don't I connect garden and cooking into one thing? And make them symbiotic, so to speak. So in May twenty twenty three, I started to work back. I was started with a four program in mind and think, what I, what would I like to present this for in terms of health? And twenty twenty four, the answer was that we wanted to show people how to use herbs to address their health issues. So we came up with a tea series. So that's twenty twenty four's, uh, theme. And then I went back and then spring in twenty twenty four, I planted a tea garden. So that in the fall, when we presented the series, we could go out there and use our own harvest. Some of those harvests are still there. I left the mist, um, untouched. You can get three of them. So then in twenty twenty five, I followed the same path. We worked up with a theme that I like to showcase some Asian vegetables. Uh, so we came up with a, a walk on the wild side, put the thought in this fall. Then I went back in the spring to plant, uh, some Asian vegetables. And to my lips, to my surprise, it actually did very well. I didn't think it was going to go at all. Have you ever seen a bitter melon? That bitter melon is extremely popular in Asia and everybody eats it as a health food. Nobody cares about it. It actually grew remarkably well. So I was really surprised. So our bit for this year is cross off around the world. So naturally in the summertime, we will be planting gardens, all of the heavens, all kinds of different. So then I want to talk a little bit about providing the platform. Um, for some reason, I use a lot more home cooks in this series than a portion of most professional chefs. But all the professional chefs that we have invited to talk have gone on to become really famous. And so I'm thinking, wow, do I have a title? But my husband, she's currently in the running, uh, in the PBS National Cooking Show. I think it's called Home Recipe. And what it has is that she actually has won it. She just came to tell us. Anyway, she has presented right here in the hall before she became so nationally recognized. Yeah. And then Chef Ricky, Chef Ricky was the first chef that I have invited to present. And of course, right after that, he went on to win, I think, three years in the role of national cooking competitions. And I'm up to that, I'm, I think I should be a talent page. Yeah. Yeah. So it was through cooking that I discovered that, um, the atrium of Shado Library is a fantastic platform to showcase all kinds of programs. In my first cooking class, I took one look at the studio and I said, um, I really don't want to be here because the wall is a barrier. And people walking by seeing us cooking in there will be curious, but they would be intimidated thinking, oh, that private event. Now there's a wall here, there's a door here, I can't enter. So I dropped the stall out. And it proved to be a huge hit. So it's interesting story. There is one patron that came in and she saw this. She says, the first time I saw this, I thought I was lucky. The second time I saw this, I was like, I can't be this lucky. And the third time she saw this, she asked me, how do I sign up so I don't miss this again? So email us. Now, this is just a few examples of all the cooking programs we have done. On the top of that is, um, for making vegetables here and it's actually presented by a former Spokane Public Library employee. So home cook. We also partner with various civic organizations. The bottom two ones here, we partner with the Sons of Norway's Lodge. And they presented their traditional, probably their best, they're all very fun, hands on programs. One year we partner with District Eighty One's, uh, Culinary Institute, contract academy. And this was a very fun and very significant, significant experience for all the students. Because I call it their edible food path. And so we have a series of four. Doing some of it was right here in this room, some of it was right in the lobby. And then we have an ongoing series with WSU's, uh, medical school, Department of Exercise Physiology and Nutrition Department. They do all kinds of, first we started with exercise, then we move on to nutrition, food and cooking. And this is their practical. I, this is, I insist, this is how you bridge what you learn academically and apply it to daily practical usage. Because in the beginning, when this partnership first started, it was all very academic. It was all powerful presentation. It was all what's the twelve? All those things that it was just beyond everybody. So I went back and said, that's the group, we focus, that's how we make this predictable. And trying to say that to who might even take it out of it. And this is what we come up with in our next, then with them, we become the brand. On that day, we are covering topics, cooking for your heart, cooking for your brain, cooking for your bones and cooking for your muscles. So I think these are all very powerful, um, topics. Recently, I foray out of the building by leading some field trips on the right, I led some field trips to the local grocery, Asian grocery stores. Because I understand that it can be intimidating for people to understand the ingredients and whatnot. And food can be really popular. So I might do it again. But it has, recently, it's last Saturday, there was a wine pairing class at Hopperberry's. Well, we're not calling it wine tasting, but somehow the mistake was we given everybody a glass. I don't know how it's happening. It was a fantastic event. Uh, Hopperberry's manager was so thrilled with that. And he suggested we do this again, despite the fact that they were opening up wines that are worth a hundred and fifty dollars a bottle. So. So we well, for the victory. I wanted to touch a little bit about digital, um, digital communication. To me, digital cooking is a little stretching an edge to having undercooked. It just doesn't bite. Um, but this program proved to be a fantastic way out of a very bad situation during COVID. Although, I think in the end, out of dozens and dozens, and I have no idea how many videos I made during COVID. The cooking itself only took up about fifteen total. But it represented to me personally and professionally a very big growth in terms of my, our, in terms of the tools that I now know we have. So I think it's worthy of mention. Give it a chance. It'll be fine. I'll leave it back to it again. I mean, without the event. So once again, during this series, we come and have a lot of local chefs and a lot of series within the series come out of it. Around the world, uh, in a corner soup with Chef Ricky. Uh, it grows of the world, of the world and so, so forth. I want to share with you some fun numbers. Uh, my programs this year will feature the local media ten types that was written on, as you mean. And let's take a look at this numbers. In twenty twenty three, I produced ninety six programs, some of it I presented myself. I have thirty seven and four attendees. I break it down to about thirty seven dollars per program. You look like this, I'm a number girl too. So in twenty twenty four, they went to a hundred and three programs. I have forty eight, hundred and fifty four attendees. Also went down to thirty dollars per program. This year, so far, I have a hundred and thirty seven programs. I still have twelve programs to go in the coming up. To go in the coming up this month, but until the end. So far, I have five thousand eight hundred sixty four attendees and the calls actually went down to twenty three dollars per program. I'm on track to break six thousand people this year. Because like I said, I still have twelve programs to go. And I think that's it. My attendance is up dearly quickly.
What is your next program?
My next program is on December sixth and is a health plan swap at South Hill. And simultaneously, I have arranged a musical duet to serenade our. Uh, participants. On the same day, I also have a line dance. The shadow. This is nothing unusual for me. I usually do five or six sometimes a day.
Do you have an upcoming cooking program?
The next upcoming program is on February.
That's cool. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Any additional items? Nope.
Can I make a clarification on what I said earlier? So instead of the minutes, it was actually the bills that were incorrect. More for my minutes, none for you, but.
Uh, any public comments?
You're good.
But while we're waiting, I'll just, just a little bit of puffery from my home base. But the great American recipe, where Su, Su Lee was there. So she was the person who was part of that event. She asked us. Well done. And more importantly, it was really great to have people in that realm see those things and. Giving us the ability to let them go. Here it is. That's great. So that's the meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, excellent. Alright, the next meeting will be December sixteenth at Liberty Park. Forward to seeing you all there. Have a great one. Thank you.